Okay, we are at new business status report of action items emanating from city council meetings.
For the last eight-plus years, would you say?
Yeah, I believe 2008.
Ten years, for the last ten years on our city website, we've had under city communications, an action register. And if you look at 118, 2018, we try to do these weekly, sometimes we skip a week. And all of the items that come from council meetings, or even internally, a lot of it's council discussion and in our work product for the year. We have a listing, and we've been listing this on our website since 2008. The topic, a person responsible, although those names change, people come and go. Target dates, you know, whether those target dates are realistic at first, I don't know. We have a target date, and we change them over time for various circumstances. And then items when they're completed, we put the date in there, we send that to the end of the list. And we keep a running tab of the status. And those are published, they've been published for the last ten years on a weekly basis. What we have in front of you is a more of a generic version. We feel it's a little more readable. And this is something that we could provide to you on a quarterly basis. We've added items like from the last council meeting. We'll add some more items based on this council meeting. And we'll give you a status update. Take a look at Emerald Point, for instance. Just, we'll go back to Emerald Point. Emerald Point, we talked, we've been talking about that since 2002, February 9th, 2016. It's now two years later, and the homeowners association finally made a decision and a recommendation, it took two years, to get back to us. So the planning commission is going to review that in March, and it'll go to city council in April.
Yes.
Yes, I like it.
It's about time.
I mean, even though it's been there on the website, this at least puts it on the agenda in the front of the public, an easier way to see where things are.
Yeah, I agree. It's going to put it out there for people to look at, it's going to bring it to their attention. The feedback I received was that they would like to see a, the proposed completion date. They'd like to see the responsible party, and like the start date, which is there, but to have it so that it's more visible.
So you want to go back to the original format?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, when you look at the original one, the original one actually has the information that people were really saying that this is what they wanted, without looking at this.
We can go back to this format, it's there.
So it's got the moving target. I think the moving target, to me, the moving target is very interesting, because it shows how long we've been working on something, we've been trying to get something done. And it's either that we just, it's either not a priority, or it's just taken, it's that difficult.
Or in the narrative, it should say why, you know?
Mm-hmm.
Like the DRC whatever, you know, was not approved, or...
You know, if you decided that you wanted to make, try to incorporate, the information is in there. Another item that was mentioned to me is to bulletize what's in the comment column, so that it's more readable, because right now it's just run-on text. And run-on text, from a readability standpoint, is very, it's not easy to follow. But if you have bullets, it's easy for the eye to just go boom, 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 boom.
It's, I mean, I don't have a preference on that, it's easy enough to read. Gary?
I like the idea, I agree with Nancy about the target date. And Emerald Point is a good example. It got bogged down, they had some changes in who the president was, and their board, and so forth. And what happened was, is I was playing tennis with the president of their board, and I told him that I was angry at him. Because I was wanting to know when we were going to complete this. And he said, you know, you're right. And then they got back on, and so the point being is, is with having the target date and seeing this moving target date, when we look at it, or when somebody else looks at it, they can see whether or not we're making progress. Or have we forgotten to move forward to the next status? Or you'll find out, it gives me a question in this case, where they had a miscommunication. So I like the idea of having the target date, even though it's a moving target date, because I think that really gives us a chance to have our finger on a pulse.
Why don't we just stay with the original?
Yeah. And the responsible party, you might want to add, like, the organization, because most people don't know who Dave L. is, but if you put the organization in there, it gives a kind of an idea of...
We can take out names and just say legal, urban design...
Yeah, yeah.
And I like Nancy's idea of the bullets.
Okay, it's going to make it longer.
It's okay.
It's easier.
It's okay.
I agree with Nancy with the bullet points, because it will appear that it's a little more concise by being able to read single-line entries rather than a full text like this is. But it goes back to what we said back when the strategic plan was put out a few months back, and it's trackable. It's something that you can, it's measurable goals that can be attained. And you put a designation of which department's responsibility it is, and then you have target dates for completion of various parts of those projects. So I think that will all kind of tie itself together with all of the stuff that's in the strategic plan by following through and completing all these ongoing projects that have been already approved by council. So I think that's ultimately what we wanted from the last meeting. I think it would be a little more helpful to have it more, to read it, for it to look more concise, I think. I think that's what you're trying to say, if I'm reading it correctly.
It could be also like the completion date column, you know, we could do something to abbreviate the completion date, or something so that that column is narrower, and the responsible column is narrow, you know, narrower, so that then it gives more space for the comment. I'm just trying to make it...
They can handle it formally.
Something like that.
One thing that I have been asked about several times, Hurricane Irma recovery, when we do start receiving FEMA funds, can we note that on there? Because I've been asked, have we received any checks yet? Have we received any checks yet? Have we received any checks yet?
We have not, but you will see on the list. Can you put up the new list? We'll go back to this format. Go down somewhere, it talks about Hurricane Irma. Hurricane Irma seawall repairs. And there's also another one on there.
Annexation, as usual.
Where is it?
The one I see says Hurricane Irma recovery, prepare communications piece on city's recovery efforts primarily focusing on debris removal and seawall restoration.
Yeah, that is an assignment for our communications division. And that is, you know, we've talked, we've talked a lot about at council meetings, our response regarding debris removal, and the seawall, and all the things we've done. And yeah, we put stuff in the weekly report. But I think a good piece, for historical sake, and for, so the public understands what we did after the hurricane in a nice concise piece, there's a story to tell. That's what that is.
But that's, you could have, what you could have done with that, too, is you could have put a target completion date, and what was done by certain dates, and how quickly it was done, and that will also be historical data for you to refer back to.
If we use the old format, it would have been there.
Yeah.
Right.
So we'll go back to the old format.
Go ahead.
Michael Finkel, administrative assistant. One question for us, the format, because I know, do you guys want, right now, when I do it, I put it in order by when it's supposed to be completed? Would you, how do you want the projects listed? When it was started, with the newest at the top?
I would like to see periodic dates of updates, and then at the very end of that, anticipated completion date, and that can be updated as it goes on, but...
I know, but I'm saying like the table itself.
That's fine.
Like the newest ones at the front, or the oldest, right now it's basically the, whatever has, the oldest completion date is at the top.
That's, that's fine, yes.
I have a question, though. For Howard and staff, how do you find it's the easiest, is the completion date the one that you look for, or is it by alphabetical order of the projects, so you can look at the project names?
I start, I don't, I start at the top, when we go over these items at staff meeting, we start at the top and work our way down.
Okay.
And then when I get the changes, I rearrange it based on the completion date.
Okay.
So it'll always be changing.
We will go back to the old format, and so we will, in April, we'll provide you an agenda item for the first quarter. Oh, yeah, first quarter.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay.
Next, we have Gilchrist Landing day docks.
Our paralegal will take over this, too.
It's the Michael Finkel show.
It is.
Again, for the record, Michael Finkel, paralegal. Recently, staff has received a lot of complaints regarding the use of the day docks. Pictured here are some photographs taken by the police department, as well as residents in the neighborhood. When the day docks were constructed, the, you can see the only sign up there, it does prohibit fishing, overnight docking, and then talks about spills. There was nothing ever adopted by ordinance to enforce any regulations over there. So staff is seeking direction on what rules and regulations we could adopt to address some issues. Some of the items that you see pictured with storage on the docks, like there's a yellow kayak, and there was another wooden, non-motorized boat. Those are not registered vessels. The police department marine patrol has taken care of those. We've removed those under the statutes of abandoned or lost property, where we will keep them stored until someone comes to claim them, or dispose of them when we can do that. But other considerations could be, you could see the storage of the dinghies up on the docks, which we heard earlier prohibits others from using it. Some other of the complaints over there were the overnight parking of cars. Code and police are monitoring that situation. They, in your agenda packet, there's a report from police, and they were cited. We're asking, if they do have vehicles, they can park along, the new parking along Reta, and the other on-street parking, which is not prohibited overnight. There are bicycles there, at the Bayfront Center, the bike rack there holds about three bicycles, it's full. We've noticed there's two additional bicycles that are chained up to an FPL power pole, because there's no room on the bicycle rack. So those are the three main complaints that we've been receiving. So we'd like to draft an ordinance to address the area.
And I did field one of the complaints, but that person had heard from several other people regarding what you see in these pictures, and what we've heard about here today. Obviously, the dinghies and the kayaks on the dock are not the best use of that facility. And it just seems like since one person started it, more started happening. And I think the neighborhood, too, they've been trying to be good neighbors, but when, you know, there's a lot more activity there, it does become a situation. I did also hear about water, water use, hose possibly, hose being used over by the Bayfront Center to fill up water tanks and such. I don't, maybe we could talk to the Bayfront Center people to see if that's happening or not, but I did hear about the dumpsters and the water at the Bayfront Center as well. So I think we just need to tighten it up a little bit, and make sure that the rules are clear for everyone. And, you know, obviously, if they're tied up, like the blue boat, that looks fine. The blue boat tied to the dock for the day is the whole idea. The other is not. Gary?
Okay, it seems to me that what we've, one of the issues that we've got here, having talked to some of the people on the liveaboard, et cetera, and things that have happened in other communities, particularly out in the Keys and so forth, is they don't, a number of these boats don't have access to our mooring field, because they're master too high. They can't get to our mooring field. And so they're going to hook out, and I blame them, they want a place to live, they live in a board. Some of these individuals are actually working in town, or they may be utilizing some of the medical facilities in town, or they just may be transients, or this is, they're living, they're seeing one. But there's about 20 boats out there, and that's not something that I think we experienced 10 years ago, and four years ago, and five years ago. And it may be something that we'll experience more. As far as the putting the, there's some good neighbor issues here, there is with everybody. I think the majority of these people are probably trying to be good neighbors, and there's always a few that are going to be an issue from time to time. And from a parking standpoint, and I think maybe we should also consider this, and to back in April of last year, we asked staff to look at the possibly restrictive parking issues in the historic area, and maybe this should be part of it, where individuals that are living aboard, and if they have a car and they park, that maybe they should at least let the city know that they have a car, and maybe utilize certain areas for parking that are not intrusive to the general use of the neighborhood and/or, again, this is a park, so if they have to walk a block, a block and a half, you know, maybe we can come to some kind of accommodations that way. So I'm wondering if there isn't a way that we couldn't ask staff, and perhaps the individuals that are using that, to work out some additional rules and/or accommodations rules, so that everybody can accommodate each other a little bit better, and allow these people to be able to hook out without causing distractions within our neighborhood.
I mean, I just wouldn't want to, you know, the staff should not be using their time to monitor where they park. Like she just said, they could park in the on-street parking on Reta, that's not prohibited overnight. They can park on the, some of the side streets, if they're not too close to the stop sign, I believe. That's allowed, but to have some kind of, I don't know if you're suggesting like have some designated area, because I know we've tried that...
No, it may be just as simple as, and I, because I don't know what the solution's going to be from last year, when we asked, because staff, I don't believe has come back to us on it, but it might be something as simple as just registering with the city, and everybody that lives in the historic district, and somebody that's on a boat, has a little sticker that they put in the window that says that, you know, they're a neighborhood person, so that you don't have people that are just bringing cars in and leaving them overnight for a month in advance, without us at least being aware...
But to me, that means registration and money, like Gainesville, like my son lives in the city of Gainesville.
Let them pay a fee, $30.
I mean, we don't have that in place, that would be a job for somebody to do that we currently don't have. I mean, if that's the way we want to go, I mean, I think it would be a little cumbersome, because they do have options right now. One of the options is not to leave your car in the Bayfront Center parking lot overnight, right?
Or the extension of Berry Street, where it's kind of grass going into the Bayfront Center, that's where parking is also pretty...
Sure, they're parking on the grass, and where police are citing them.
Yes.
What we're asking for is, do we have direction to prepare an ordinance, so that we can enforce, for instance, no overnight storage of equipment on the docks?
Yes.
And no, like even dinghies, you can't have them on the dock. We have, we need to have an enforcement mechanism.
No storage of anything but perhaps a kayak. I mean, really, even these skiffs do not belong on the day docks. So even that little white skiff that's turned upside down on the lower left-hand picture, should be just tied up. And the sign needs to be clarified, because I don't understand the block spill access to water with bucket absorbent pads and rings, and it's kind of unclear to me. So if we're going to change the sign, then we maybe...
Well, we will change the sign once we have an ordinance in place, that we can revise it. But we want to move forward with an ordinance.
Yes.
Lynn?
I have a couple of questions. We have these docks available, and we profess to be a boating community. Why do we not want people to park on them overnight if they are liveabords, however, they have to go into town and maybe have something going on where they might have a medical situation? Or in the case of the gentleman who's the pilot, he has to come to shore to get to his job, and he might leave his boat there for a day or two while he's going to his job? I don't, I don't think that it displays boater friendliness if we are going to enforce this rule, unless we have a way that they can have, like we were saying, possibly a permit, a short-term permit, when they have to come to shore and leave the boat overnight. I'm just, I'm looking at both sides of the equation. I understand the purpose of the day docks is just for day use, but there's probably going to be situations where some of these folks who are out there living aboard their boat may need to be onshore for extended periods.
And I think he said he pays Fisherman's Village, and he goes to Fisherman's Village, and that's probably what he does. Is that he brings his dinghy over there, and maybe his car is over there, too, and he's worked out a situation with them, which is what ultimately, if there was a mooring field out there, they would probably be managing it, and that's the way it would go. So, I mean, I don't agree with any overnight, like it was stated. If there is, if even the kayaks on the dock, then that's prohibiting the use of other people that want to use it. Jaha, and then we'll go back to Gary.
Yeah, I support the use of a day dock as a day dock. What we don't want to happen is Sarasota. And I think this is kind of, at this moment now, because maybe whoever started putting this on here, started this trend, I think we do need to address this with the ordinance, like right now, so that we're not seen as that friendly. We're friendly, but not overly friendly, because overly friendly is a problem.
I mean, at one point, there was a dog tied up over there for hours and hours and hours. I don't think he's there anymore, but there was a dog, a resident dog, that the person would bring over and tie it up, and it kind of lived over there tied up. Gary?
I'm getting back to it, maybe I'm making it more complicated than it needs to be, so I apologize. As far as the word "storage" goes, I don't think any storage should be done on this dock. Okay? To me, that's non-negotiable. And I understand the word "day," and the reality is, is somebody is using, is a liveaboard, they're going to use their boat to come ashore, to do their business, they're going to get back on their boat, and their boat is going to be tied up to their boat while they're on their boat. Now, with that said, there may be somebody that's a liveaboard, because they have a medical condition, the boat might stay there. And I think we can deal with those as that happens, you know? We're not heartless, you know, when you become a verbiage. But you might have somebody, for example, maybe they're a nurse that works third shift at Fawcett Hospital, okay? And they would, on a routine basis, three or four times a week, might leave that boat overnight on that dock, but then in the day, it's out on the water. I think, again, I go back to, a lot of these boats are inaccessible to our mooring field. We are, I agree absolutely with Lynn, that we are a boater-friendly community, we want to remain so. I think that there may be, that we do need to redo some of these rules, so that they're enforceable, but I think we also want to do it in light of the fact that some of these people are liveaboard people, and there may need to be some flexibility. And that's where I'm saying, is maybe it's as simple as registering, you know, out there, that you register with the city that you have a dinghy, and your boat's going to be there overnight, because you're third shift at someplace, Chaney Brothers or what have you, if that's what your life is and so forth. So at least we have some semblance on it. That does put some onus on us, but it also gives us the ability to be able to manage the people that are rude.
Yes.
It's been a while since I've taken a look at it, so the specific details, I may not be real clear on, but we do have something that might be somewhat analogous with respect to the parking of recreational vehicles in residential districts, where you got to get a permit if you're going to, no? Do we do away with that?
Lisa Hann, zoning official, that's actually just in the special residential overlay district.
Yeah, but, but, I mean, so the point is, that if you've got an RV, people visiting, or you bring your RV, and you want to be able to equip it, and maybe need, please, what is the specific language or conditions regarding the permits that we issue for temporary parking of RVs in the...
For recreational vehicles, you're allowed seven days in a 30-day period. It has to be in the driveway, fully in the driveway. That's for recreational vehicles. For watercraft parking in a driveway in the special residential overlay district, it can be in the right-of-way or in the driveway for two nights.
Okay, maybe that's what I'm thinking of. And do we have to, do we issue permits at all for any of that?
Yes, in the special residential overlay district, we issue them all the time, but the watercraft is limited to two nights, two overnight, and then you have to wait an additional two nights, and they're only allowed to do that four times a year.
Okay. The point that I wanted to get to was that there is some precedent for establishing some regulatory policy for extended nights of parking. And so I see that, you know, we've got two floating docks here. Maybe we have one for no overnight storage, and/or docking, and one for overnight docking, but with permits, so that we can regulate who's going to be keeping their boats overnight, and keeping one available for just transient docking. Is that something that you might want to consider?
I think there's options. I think Fisherman's Village is an option for those people. And that's, you know, when we intended these day docks, it was really like a kayak launch, a hand boat, hand, what am I trying to say? Where you wheel it in. Yeah, you don't, you don't back a trailer up and launch a boat here. You go hand delivery, kayak such, little sailboat type of thing. So I think the conditions exist. If they want to work it out with Fisherman's Village to do such, then there's probably an avenue. Patty's not here, she had foot surgery. I wish she was here to answer, but I'm sure Fisherman's Village would be accommodating to those people for a fee, and keep this, I totally agree, no storage on the dock. The tight, obviously, the tied-up boats, the blue boat is doing the right thing.
So you want to maintain, and I just was wondering if there's going to be any change in that, in that policy? You want to maintain no overnight docking? And if there's going to be any overnight docking, need to be done at...
At a commercial, some facility.
Yeah, okay, I understand.
And that's one of the things we've talked about, the council has, even before I got on council, is the lack of an upland facility. And if ever, we have an upland facility at Lashley Marina, and to accommodate all of this. We do not have that. There was the potential for it from the Punta Gorda Waterfront Hotel, but that went through the, fell apart. So there is no upland facility, and we can't accommodate it. The facilities are available at Fisherman's Village, it's a little bit of a distance, but they're there. So we're doing, I think to accommodate the way we have it, is providing the best of what we can do, because we don't have anyone to manage something.
So the consensus, as I understand it, and just, I was looking for direction, is that this facility is not really intended to address the liveabords?
No, unfortunately.
Good, no, no, I mean, that's the direction I was looking for.
Yeah. Because at the point in time, long before, Rachel, you weren't, probably not even on council at the time, when there was the discussion for permitting the mooring field west of the bridge, and that, then the discussion was, at the time, the owners of the Waterfront Hotel, which was then the Best Western, were going to provide that facility. And it was a great plan, but that all fell apart. So, and instead of permitting, which would have cost over $200,000, just to permit the mooring field, then that was, that, those funds from the MAC were turned toward dredging, where we have the day docks.
Howard?
To add to that history, and I know this is just historical. This whole council wasn't here when it was, when it was started, so, and I know, just because it was done that way, it can't be done differently, we all understand that. So for some history's sake, this was done not due to liveabords. When there was a proposal way back when, to put facilities in the Bayfront Center to accommodate visiting boaters, or liveabords, or transient boaters, that was not thought of very highly, to be nice about it, from the neighborhood, the historical neighborhood, nor from other members of the community. And it was never, it never materialized. It never saw the light of day, and still hasn't seen the light of day. It never saw the light of day and still hasn't seen the light of day. So this was for just, and the mooring field never materialized by the former Best Western. All this was is for small boats.
Yes.
That's all it was, for be able to use it during the day, you know, maybe go downtown, go back to their small boat, canoe, kayak, whatever it was, and leave. Now we have a community out there in the water. Legal, there's a community out there and they can use this, but it has caused some consternation to the neighborhood, to the historic district.
So can we decide that we don't want any storage on the docks?
Yes.
Yes. You got that?
I think we need to put an ordinance in place that's enforceable. If we're going to have rules, we need to be able to enforce them.
Or these rules are in an ordinance somewhere? No? None of the Gilchrist?
No, that's what she said. There was no ordinance.
We put it up.
Okay.
I would agree.
It's pretty fine. I think when it originally went, maybe had to do with permitting because I checked with Rusty, the dock master at Lashley Park, and he said the same sign, the same language is on the sign over there. So that could be how it went up.
All right, well, we can add it to our park ordinance and...
Do you think the spill language had anything to do with the DEP or anything like that? Because I know at Lashley, we've got other signage that was mandated by them.
If this is similar to the sign that we have at the marina, then it was probably part of our marina permit to deal with the spills.
That's what I was saying.
Okay.
That probably is.
Gotcha.
We will put it together and it'll go through a public hearing.
Do we want to talk about the bicycle? Do we need to address the bicycle situation or...
Well, it need be. We can do that internally and add a rack if we have to somewhere.
And maybe in the plan for the park renovation, we come up with additional bicycles, racks.
We can handle that internally. We don't need a...
Okay. All right. Okay, next we have Pickleplexa Pontegorroa temporary sign permit.
We received a, staff received the request to place a sign at the current pickleball courts at Gilchrist Park over on a short portion of the fence during season to help gather donations for their building fund. We're bringing it to council for approval or denial.
What size?
I emailed the Pickleplexa folks. I did not receive an email back. I requested the material of the sign and what size. I didn't get any response back. I did request that they be at the meeting today to attend, but I didn't hear back from them last week.
I will represent them. Eighteen by 24 inches, not big. And they actually made up something that's had printed and it's laminated so they could just tie it up.
Have it?
Well, they have something, they're using elsewhere as well. Like when they go out to the South County Regional Park, they already have this and they're using it. And it's just to put it up, where it's, to put it up by, on the fence, by where they stand the paddles, when the paddles are waiting. Sometimes the paddles are 10 deep. So they're, they just thought it was a way of encouraging people to participate. And they only want to do this during season. So when season's up, they would, so just for a couple of months.
So it'll be full-time there?
They would leave it up full-time. I mean, they would put it up.
The Grinch needs to speak.
Speak, Grinch.
If we allow the posting of a sign for, even though it's well-intentioned, we're going to have to open up the door for other signs for other reasons and we wouldn't be able to discriminate between the signs based on text. A recommendation would simply be that if, you know, you have some of these signs repaired and let, when players go out there, they can put like an A little sign next to where their equipment is so that the players can see that and then take it away with them when they go.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
But being done not by the city, allowing them to put a sign up, we can't prohibit somebody from putting, while they're playing.
Temporary kind of thing. All right. Then I will take that to the group and let them know that they can proceed, because they're out there every day anyway, so, that we would have no problem with them just, you know, doing that on their own, but they just needed, it's not going to be something they would have fixed, anything. Would they be agreeable to taking it with them at the end of their playing time? Well, they would need to.
Yeah, they would have to.
That's according to what David's saying, they would need to do that. Okay. Because I got the same feedback that David was referring to and there was concern that it would set a precedent for other people that wanted to put signs up. But I don't have a problem if they put something up temporarily while they're there playing and then just remove it when they're done. I think that would make the most sense without anybody else getting upset. Yeah.
Gary?
I don't think David should feel that he's the Grinch here because we did have to, for very similar reasons, reject the Peace River Wildlife Center.
Right.
Doing something very similar, although it was a bigger sign. So I think we do have to stand fast to what our precedent is here and so I don't think David should feel guilty.
Take your Grinch hat off.
Thank you.
Do we need to put a date certain for the end point of the...
No, they can, because they're not posting anything.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Next, we have, Jim Finch has been sitting so patiently here all morning. The event permit for the premier auto auction, March 13th through 20th.
Yes. Another signage request, but this will be probably at the Marketplace property around the fenced area. And at the event center, they're just asking for a little additional signage than what we would permit, a little larger signage. So it can be easier for them to get the, everybody parking where they should be. So, and if there's any questions, I have, I can have Jim answer.
The question that came up in a conversation I had with some residences, it's the same weekend as the Peace River National Art Show that's at Lashley. And in the map, it shows parking of whatever, like the Justice Center and at Lashley Park in the Marina area. And so it's a concern over a conflict of, you know, the exhibitors that are at the art show and things like that. And I know that this premier auto event is huge. So how can we kind of...
I've, Jim Finch, general manager for the Charlotte Harbor Event and Conference Center. I've actually spoken with the event planner for the art show and they are actually utilizing the Marketplace lot for parking for their show. And she was okay, because I believe they might be charging for parking in that location. So she's okay for additional folks for the event at the event center to park there. Plus, they're going to be directed to the Herald Garage and the other city surface lots as well. And the auction itself is only on Friday, the 16th and Saturday, the 17th. The larger week is for them to load in the cars and then to take the cars out. So really, the heavy traffic days are the Friday and Saturday.
Okay, good. I'm glad you've been in...
Yeah, they're working together.
Good. I'm glad you're working together.
And we met with the premier auction people and they were aware that the city Marketplace, and I believe they've coordinated that with them.
Okay.
It's just mainly utilizing the bigger spaces where the, after the people that drop their car for auction, they have a place to go take the bigger rigs off-site, which is the use safe. I believe they probably talked to that owner because they had talked to them before. And then the other, you know, the other areas are public. So I think that's what they were noting on that, too.
No, I'm glad you've worked with the other event.
And their next auction does coordinate with the tree lighting again, too. So we've been talking about November 30th as well.
I'll be back again.
Yes. But we're in talks with them, which is good. And they want to be a good community partner, so. Gary?
My experience with them has been very positive. When I was asked to give a presentation at their very first auction here a couple, a year ago, it was that they want to be good neighbors and they do bring a lot of good traffic to our downtown area at the same time. And my experience is that the participants, both the potential buyers, just the lookers and also the sellers, have been very respectful and good citizens, generally speaking.
And I think if they tell their, you know, they're in close contact with their people, they're telling them now to have a plan for...
And there's a reason they're wanting to come back as often as they are. They like it here.
They did well.
And we've liked them and we've been accommodating to them and they've been accommodating to us. And it's just good for everybody all around.
And it's St. Patrick's Day, too. Don't forget that.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
It's going to be a little crazy downtown. So do we need a motion to approve?
I, so...
Motion to approve. Oh, sorry.
We have a motion a second to approve the event permit. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have recommendation from city officers. Howard?
Nothing more to add.
What?
I don't have anything.
Wow.
During the break, I had a conversation with the city clerk and my city paralegal regarding the method for repealing the moratorium. And we're going to bring it back to you at the next city council meeting as an emergency ordinance.
So then it'll be done?
Yep.
Okay.
Good.
Smart. Anything else?
That's it. Sorry. Thank you.
City clerk?
Get my microphone down here, close to my face. Okay, yes, under boards and committees, starting with vacancies. We have an unexpired term as an alternate on the building board, an unexpired term as an alternate on the code enforcement board, and a four-year term on the general employees' pension board. Under nominations, we have two three-year terms on the historic preservation advisory board. We have six eligible applicants for nomination.
Nominate all?
Thank you. Okay, and as I explained in an email to you, we made a change and moved the police officers' pension board from vacancies to nominations because we do have Mr. Harry Bartel interested in serving. In reading the agenda item, it reads like Mr. Adam Cummings, it says he's eligible for reappointment, but I just want to clarify that Mr. Cummings was notified of the end of his term and never responded to the clerk's office. So although he's eligible, he did not indicate an interest in being reappointed. That's why we moved this forward to just one eligible applicant. So if you'd like to nominate and appoint Mr. Bartel at this time, you can do so.
Nominate and appoint?
Second.
We have a motion a second to nominate and appoint Mr. Bartel. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, moving to appointments. Your voting forms for, this is an unexpired term on the planning commission. We have three nominees. As you know, Mr. Kidwell withdrew his name for consideration. We'll get a paper cut. Okay, and then lastly, under appointments, we have the general employees' pension board. This will be a four-year term. And again, this was changed with Mr. Bartel withdrawing his name. We have one eligible applicant remaining, that's Mr. Tiller, who introduced himself today. Since we only have one applicant, there's no point in voting. If you would like to appoint Mr. Tiller, we'll do that by motion.
I appoint.
Okay.
We have a motion a second to appoint Mr. Tiller. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, just wanted to talk about, do you want to address the signage for the Vietnam Wall really quick?
The signage for the Vietnam Wall is actually on our action register. And we will be dealing with that when we redo, see what's on the screen now, the wayfinding signs? Well, we're going to be changing those, maybe, if you approve the removal of Tribune Woods from the historic neighborhood. We're going to call it historic district. So we got to redo the wayfinding signage anyways. Maybe we can find a spot for the Vietnam Wall there.
Good.
And we'll see if there's any other areas. So we're going to be dealing with signage for the Vietnam Wall as part of the wayfinding. And our communications manager already put up on our Facebook page, the Vietnam Wall right at the beginning and talking about where it is. And so she jumped on that right away as well.
And I know TDC has looked into those brown, like the botanical garden as well, the brown DOT signage that you can get, but it's very cumbersome and restrictive on getting those signs. You actually have to prove certain numbers of visitors and it's not an easy thing to do. I know it was looked into when the wall was first presented, even before it was built. So I don't know how far that can go in the future, but it has been looked into and it's super restrictive.
It was like 100,000, like for check, we were looking at that and it was like 100,000 visitors within a year. It was a lot.
The botanical is looked into it, too. And they don't meet the threshold either. So you can't really get the directional signage off the interstate for those things. It is a DOT process, which we can all just imagine what that means. As far as legislation goes, you guys are probably all receiving the FLC alerts about the bills that are moving. The CRA bill is moving. While our CRA is on its way out, the county has three active CRAs. They need to be really worried about some of that language that's in there. Short-term vacation rental, basically taken-away home rule on that is moving. And the municipal elections, which really doesn't, I talked with Karen, doesn't affect us, but it does affect other cities that do not have the regular cycle elections as per their charter. So those three are definitely moving through the committees. The elected travel, the elected officials' travel bill did get amended to be a little bit more palatable, but what the final version on that is, I'm not really sure. So I think this week is one of the last weeks for the committee meetings and they have their hands full with what happened last week and they really need to give that their total attention at this point. So maybe some of this, I think the tree bill, I heard, was not being heard again. So that may have died in Sarasota with the sponsor. So we'll see. We'll see. And after this week, they don't even have a 24-hour notice for their meetings. It's, it goes down even less than that, so they can just meet and talk about what they want with very short notice to the public. So it'll start happening really fast. So we'll just have to, you know, depend on the league. They're very good. The Monday morning call-ins are very good. They're sending the legislative alerts. One thing I did want to tell you is that on March 5th, March 5th was, which is a Monday, so that is before our next council meeting, the CRC, the Constitution Revision Commission, they're going to have a public hearing down in Cape Coral. You get two minutes. You get two minutes to speak to the CRC, planning to go to that and just voice opinions on some of the proposals that are still out there because 95 can come back in their closed-door session. So just letting them know that, you know, let the committee process work and it died in committee. If it does come back, I believe it does have to have a supermajority of the CRC to bring it back. But after that, it could go right to the ballot and we would have no say-so on that. So it's in Cape Coral. I believe it's 1:00 PM to 7:00 PM at the Westin. If you get there by 7:00 PM, they have to give you a card to speak. So it's an all-day deal for them. So I will attend that and take my two minutes. So I will attend that and take my two minutes and push the league home rule agenda forward with them as well. We did meet with Erica Donald, she is the local government chairwoman. She, she's, she sat down with us and I have to say it was, it was a good, really good meeting. But she did say that there is a chance that 95, proposal 95, could come back. That was the whole point of dying, letting it die in committee. So those, that's what's happening with legislation, as far as I know. Do I have anything else? Okay. Council member comments, let's start with Gary.
First of all, I'm, I'm pleased that my council members and I have been able to surprise Howard in being able to make such a quick and ready decision on colors. It's, it's, he's, he's still shaking his head.
I had visions of at least an hour.
So I'm glad that we disappointed him and that's really all I have to say today. But thank you.
Nancy?
I'm, thank you for bringing up the Vietnam Wall, because I was asked by Bill Hughes to bring it up, since he had to leave early. And otherwise, I'll communicate to the pickleball team.
Just one quick thing, I attended the joint meeting of the MPO for Charlotte County and Lee County last week and Rachel was there as well. There were a couple of major items on their agenda, one of which is the intersection at Vermont Road and 31, Vermont 74, yeah. They're going to, for a temporary fix, they're planning on installing a traffic light there for traffic control. The long-term plan, which won't happen for another probably four years or so, is that they will be purchasing right away land around that intersection and eventually put a roundabout there to better control the traffic and then it will be speed controlled and very closely monitored. So that's a very good thing and the fact that Babcock Ranch is up and coming and, and they will eventually widen that road as well, but that's long-term plans for, for Vermont Road and, and 31. So that's a big deal. And also, they're discussing the widening of Burnt Store Road for the phase that is not yet completed in Charlotte County. We're hoping that that's going to get done in the next two to three years. We'll see. There's fingers crossed, there's, you know, the long-term, the long-range plan says 2022, but they're, they're hoping to get it done sooner than that. So those are two big things. They're also reviewing the plans for locally in our own MPO to widen Harborview Road in view of the fact that we're going to be getting Sunseeker. And they're coming, folks, they started tearing down the restaurant yesterday on, on Deshore. So it's, it's coming. And Mr. Redmond stated at the last meeting we were at for the EDP that they were going to start leveling everything this week and start going vertical in August of this year. So they're very much on track for that. So it's, it's coming. And, and they're in the process of possibly buying the land on the north side. And I say possibly because I have to, I have to tell you a little story about it, but they're, they're looking at buying the land on the north side of the bridges to put their marina, a hotel and another condo tower on the north side. And, and what happened was, the county had, had purchased that land a few years ago. If they were going to sell it, excuse me, they would have had to go through the formal billing, or bidding process, rather, with allowing anybody in the entire world to bid on it. And it would have been a very long and extensive project. So what they did was they deeded the land to the CRA. So the CRA only had to accept a letter of intent from Sunseeker with a 30-day clause. And if nobody else files a letter of intent in that 30-day period, then Sunseeker can go ahead and purchase the land at an agreed-upon price. So that's what's going on with that. I've had a lot of questions, even though it's not in the city limits, I just wanted to share that information with you. But, so now they're starting to worry about the traffic issues and, and concerns. And if you have any concerns that you would like to bring to the county commissioners, I would encourage you to do that. County commissioners really control the purse strings on any of the road widening or intersection improvements or anything like that, that's got to occur on, on the Port Charlotte side of the bridges.
And the three, the three sit on, two or three are on the MPO?
Three, three.
Chris Constance, Steven R. Deutsch and.
Joe Chiseo.
And Joe Chiseo. So those would be the three that sit on the MPO that you should probably direct your, your comments to.
Right. And, and also to me, I mean, I'd be happy to relay comments at our next meeting, which will be in second week of March. So if you have any comments that you'd like to share about that, feel free to send me your comments. I'd be happy to relay them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nothing.
Nothing?
Yeah.
Citizens' comments, any topic? Please take this podium over here, you have three minutes. Nobody's moving. Oh, my gosh, I'm in shock. I thought we were going to have to break for lunch. We are adjourned at 11:56.